There we go.
You're ready to start.
I got Jackson is 100 bucks. It's half price.
In 5:32, I will call to order the mission meeting for, what is the date today?
June 3rd.
June 3rd, 2025. Roll call, Chris.
Ms. Proper.
Yeah.
Mr. Giller, Mr. Lees.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Garrett.
Here.
Ms. Gort. Mr. Frecter.
Here.
Hey, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes tonight.
Thank you, Chris. Now, I'm going to open the meeting to public comment on historic preservation issues that are not on the agenda this evening. As part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historic preservation issues in the community. With that, I will open the meeting to any public comment. Please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're attending the meeting by phone, and then star six to unmute yourself. Do we have anybody present there, Cliff?
No one, no one raising their hands.
Anybody in the audience wish to comment on historic preservation? No? With that, we will move on to the consent calendar. We have the Dubois Residence PL 2025 dash zero one zero five. Anybody wish to bring this one up? No? Then the consent calendar will stand as approved and we will move on to, I think Duke's up next. Hi, Duke.
Here's the microphone. Thank you, Cliff. Hi, everyone. My name is Duke Barlow and I am the Open Space and Trails Manager and thanks for having me. I am here to present our State of the Open Space Report from 2024. So, a few things on this. It's an annual report for everything that was done in 2024. So, quick disclaimer, it blurs and we've done some things since then, so I may blur the lines. Happy to discuss any of this if, I'd like it to be a conversation. Please interrupt me if you have questions or comments on something in the middle of the presentation and we can go down that rabbit hole for a minute. And the other thing is that I didn't start my role until the middle of 2024, July 1st. So, we've done a lot of great things and I was only here for half of it. So, don't give me too much credit. I think that's it. I know that maybe Mark could elaborate, but this is something that we used to present to the Planning Commission and it's been a bit. So, thanks again for letting me do it this time. Okay, let's see. I think I just scroll down. Okay. So, here's what we will cover. I'll just go through big picture of the program and then we'll touch on our strategic goals from our master plan and then just go through the staff. So, for those that don't know the history, this program was founded in 96. It was a ballot initiative. Some citizens got a petition signed with enough signatures and got on the ballot. A tax initiative to dedicate one half of 1% of sales tax in perpetuity to open space acquisition and management. I think that this group of citizens, I heard you were talking about Jeffrey, he was one of them and his wife Ellen. It felt like development was happening too fast and they were worried about preserving open space and enough people got behind them and it passed. And so, I think we can be grateful for the foresight and initiative that they had. The mission statement remains the same. The mission of the Breckenridge Open Space and Trails Program is to preserve lands that define and enhance the unique mountain character of the town of Breckenridge with the objective of maintaining our community's quality of life for present and future generations. And picture there is a previous BOSAC. So, you probably have heard of BOSAC, maybe some of you are more familiar than others, but that is our Open Space Advisory Commission. And so, they have a representative town council and six other members and they recommend to council what to do with our open space funds. Okay, so we rewrote our master plan in 2023 and our four, broken into four goals, which is how I'll frame this presentation, conservation, recreation, access and inclusion, and stewardship. Just quickly, 10,000 foot view, some of the numbers from the last season, some are stuff we did last year, some are just accumulations. But to date, we've now spent over $34 million on property acquisitions. We have over 5,200 acres and 70 miles of trails that we manage. Some of that is just town, some of that is jointly with the county or with an agreement with the Forest Service. This past year, we had a budget of over eight and a half million dollars and I'll touch on how that was spent. 90% of our trail crews' time is spent doing trail maintenance. That is just kind of an important important statistic to put into perspective that we, our system has gotten so big, we're building new pieces here and there, but really it's now a stewardship and management phase where it takes a lot of work just to maintain the standard that we want on all of our trails and spaces. One small thing here in the bottom right is adopt a trail program. That's something that used to be successful and to the credit of Tony Overlock, he resurrected it and worked with the NRO and they they cleaned up a section of the Riverwalk and River Trail in the town corridor and we hope to build on that success and keep that going again. Okay, so last year's budget, minor capital is land acquisitions and I'll get into how much we spent, you know, 6.2 million. So, that's pretty high. For example, this year we've budgeted 4 million for land acquisitions and that's closer to average. So, we had a a higher than normal spending year in acquisitions. Services is 11% and that's higher than it had been previously by a couple of percentage points, but that might stay that way because we're having to, like I said, we're doing all this maintenance and the complexity is growing and we're having to delegate some of the work to contractors and consultants that we might have done in-house before. Personnel is a little lower. That's because my predecessor was gone and I didn't start working for a couple of months, but it'll probably stay pretty steady. And one other outlier here is that grants is higher than normal and and I will get into this, but we worked with the town of Blue River on a couple of property acquisitions to preserve access and extend access on the Blue River Trail. And as it went out, we actually made a grant contribution to them in exchange for intergovernmental agreement to preserve the trail access. And so, that's reflected in the grants where normally we're just giving money to say Forensia Dillon Ranger District or Colorado 14 Years Initiative. Liam Duran is to credit for most of the nice photographs. Okay, acquisitions. So, I've got a few slides here. As you saw on the budget, that's where we spend most of our money. And you can see on the, on this right column, right table. Last year, we had 75 acres that we acquired, but it's just been a, you know, a bunch of, um, higher totals early on. 2005 was the B&amp;B claim. So, that's where you have that really large number of 1,800 acres. But otherwise, pretty steady trickle maybe. And you can see here at the top, the in-town versus out-of-town. So, within the town limits, only 657 acres as compared to 4,500 in the Upper Blue watershed. And we define that as Hoosier Pass to Farmer's Corner and then the 10-mile range and French Pass and Boris Pass to the east.
Can we back up just a minute? What is the B&amp;B acquisition in 2005 for those of us who may not know?
Yeah. Thank you for asking. So, those are assortment of mining claims, mostly in French Gulch, some over towards Tiger Road. And we bought them together with the county. So, that is where above Country Boy Mine and further east up the drainage, that's where we have some trails and then and then from there further north over to the Tiger Jumbo Mine on Tiger Road, but it.
And so, were those claims bought from the original mining companies? Were there descendants or?
They were bought from, that's the name of the mining company, B&amp;B Mines, that we bought them from and.
So, these guys still own the claims, but they weren't present, they weren't doing anything positive and hopefully nothing negative at the.
No, and they weren't, you know, they weren't perfecting the claim, so to speak, in terms of doing any subsurface work or stuff like that, but they had bottom with potentially that in anticipation. But yeah, we were able to, using Turk Monapar as who's been our right-hand acquisition expert, kind of pro bono for the town for 25 years now.
Was there any viability for toxicity that came along with some of those?
Yeah, and I can have Duke explain a little more, but we actually had to go through a pretty long process with the EPA and with B&amp;B Mines in that to do this consent decree, which basically came to the terms that we had to have in place because we knew otherwise we were going to take over potentially a nightmare in terms of obligation and everything. The one thing that we were held to was the Wellington Ordo Water Treatment Plant, which is built there right across from Country Boy and that was explicitly built because of the consent decree with the EPA to remove some of the heavy metals that were coming out of some of the mine addits up above there. And Duke, have you got anything to add on that? Go ahead.
But nothing that we acquired raised to the level of the supersite?
No, and we, and we're absolved from any other obligation. So.
By the EPA?
Yes. Yep.
The only thing I would add is just because we bought that 50/50 with the county, they share the costs of managing that water treatment plant equally with us.
Thank you.
So, on the town, county, is it, when it's shown as town, county, is it always 50/50 or?
No, that's a great question and it may be earlier on, before I was a part of this. I should add, just from my background, I was on BOSAC for eight years prior to taking this role. So, I feel like I knew a lot of the stuff from the outside and then I'm learning it from the inside in this role.
Sorry, you were on what?
BOSAC, the Open Space Advisory Commission, the equivalent of the Planning Commission, but open space. So, more recently, the, it's been, I think, pretty common that the town has spent more than 50% of the purchase cost. The county is, you know, feeling pressured to diversify their acquisitions across the whole county and not just in the Upper Blue. And they don't have the same funding as we do. But much of our purchases have been 50/50 and then I think before that, Mark, maybe you could, or Chris would know, but I think there may be some examples where the county paid more than 50% and we paid less. But it had been our standard for a long time and that's what the goal that we try to achieve, but there are times when it just doesn't make sense for them and we still want to go forward.
Then how do you make decisions for that land if you're not majority owner or?
We work really closely with the county. So, much of the land we manage, we manage with them. So, we'll consult with them, but ultimately if it was a disagreement, the majority owner would, would get to have their way.
But the vast majority, I probably, the 5,000 acres, I would venture to say 4,000 of them are 50/50 acquisitions.
Yeah, I mean, I think our, our background documents, like our master plans, you know, the Golden Horseshoe is a good example where we have a joint master plan with the county and also the Forest Service. They really manage it seamlessly in terms of the, you know, obligations for maintenance and being consistent on what types of uses we want in certain areas. So, in most cases, even if we're not 50/50, which to Mark's point is pretty rare, there's a lot of guidance in terms of what the expectation is in various areas.
Yep.
And could one or the other of you help me to understand exactly what is the thought process that goes into buying the mining claims which have the liability potential of the toxicity of it as opposed to not buying them? Is the intent to prevent the mining companies from being able to do anything there? Or is the intent to prevent development by private developers? What exactly is the intent whereby we're spending public funds on these acquisitions?
Yeah, thanks, Mark. The intent is, it's really not about the mining, subsurface mining interest. We do acquire that when we can, but it's really to avoid the development potential. So, back in the late 90s, when the Joint Upper Blue Master Plan was adopted, which we adopted with Town of Blue River and the Summit County, and one of the key goals was to protect our back country. And when we talk about our back country, it's really those mining claims, which there's, as you can see here, there's thousands of acres out there. There's still about maybe 1,000 left that is in, under private ownership out there. But back 20 years ago, there was 6,000 acres under private ownership and there was really concerns about people that, like the Aspen model, they come in with more money than cents and, you know, be willing to switch back a road up the side of, you know, French Gulch, up Mineral Hill or somewhere like that. And you know, you'd have these scars there forever along with a big trophy home site up top. So, it was really intent to avoid seeing development on those. So, there's been a number of steps that have been taken. The county took a really aggressive step in rezoning a lot of that land to backcountry zone, which limited the development potential to small cabin-like square footages. But it's, this whole program has been about trying to lock up that land and preserve it, you know, because for its environmental values, conservation values, but also for its, you know, recreational values.
Thank you.
One other piece with this slide is just, you know, alluded to how closely we work with the county. We don't have a history of working with the town of Blue River and we were able to make, start to build a partnership with them this year and in those purchases I alluded to with the grant contributions and hopefully we were able to build on that and just secure more public access both ways from Breck to Blue River and back from Blue River into Breckenridge. Excuse me. Okay, so a little clumsy scrolling here, sorry. God. All right, that's pretty good. So, these are each of the acquisitions and I like this map because it makes it, I don't know, it sort of brings into perspective. We spent a lot of money on properties last year and it doesn't look like that much on this big map. I have a subsequent map that will show all the land that we manage with the county. And then keep in mind, so much of our surrounding open space land is owned by the Forest Service. So, that really would highlight how much is, is protected. But just here, quickly going through the list, we were able to purchase some properties in or near town this year that were especially expensive, but also priorities. One was a Little Daisy, so that's the mining claim just above the Wellington neighborhood, just north. And that has a home on it, inhabited home. But that was important to preserve it for recreational access and we had wanted to make sure, you know, we control that and we are now, we're now landlords with the home and that wasn't something that we sort of planned on, but it's been a good relationship and we're able to take care of this property and maintain, you know, maintain the access through there and some of the restrictions like non-motorized through there. So, that's here. Little, Lizzie Load, which is on Little Mountain, was another big one that we acquired. And if you'll remember that, I don't know how much the Town of Breck Planning Commission was involved, but the county was involved in a dispute about development on that parcel. And as part of that, the property owners took away trail access rights in a key connector and people were mad about that. That was on the Illinois Creek Trail. So, we were able to get that one. And in the bigger picture, which the next map will show, we now have control all of Little Mountain, so we can preserve that and, and program it for recreation and conservation. So, those two, this is a good map and just a good list of properties because it kind of represents the variety of stuff that we're trying to pick up. The next one is Jackpot and that's Jackpot and Evening Star Claims are a couple, a couple tiny mining claims up near French Pass above Tree Line. And that, Mark, to your question earlier, you know, the threat there, they didn't cost very much money, but what if somebody bought it and wanted to pursue building a cabin up there and potentially getting a road and somehow, you know, it's just kind of a nightmare scenario and it's like, no, we want to prevent that from happening. So, we got that one. And then Humbug Claims are a series of mining claims in the Golden Horseshoe up near Humbug Hill. That's here. And then Aspen Springs. I should add that Humbug Claims, we split with the county. In Aspen Springs, we also split with the county and this is right near the Quandry Trailhead. And as you may have heard, there's a lot of, well, it's a busy place. I'm sure you know that. And there's a lot of future programming planned there. So, we wanted to control a little more of that. And so, we split that with the county.
Is that where Quandry is?
Yes, that's where Quandry is. So, this is right adjacent to the existing parking lot to the east. So, we now have that parcel of land. And then the Clyde Load, I can almost not, it's almost hard to see, but the Clyde Load and 119 Bonanza Trail are the two properties on or adjacent to the Blue River Trail that secure access to that, that we were able to work with the Town of Blue River on. Okay, bear with my clumsy scrolling again. Wish there were a button, but. So, this, this shows, God. Sorry. Okay, good enough. This shows in red are properties that just the town owns and then in blue are things that we own jointly with the county, usually at that 50/50 proportion. And so, we have stuff down south near Hoosier Pass and then stuff way east up, up Tiger Road and up by French Pass. But you can see the town limits here and, you know, we have some, some parcels within the town limits, but so much of it is outside of town. And you can see here on this chart how much we've spent in terms of financial contribution on acreage in town and out of town. And of course, it comes as no surprise that even though we don't own that many acres in town, they cost more. So, the Town of Breck has spent almost equally the amount of money in town parcels versus out of town. And Summit County, they don't really contribute when it's within the town limits for, for obvious reasons. Okay, recreation. I talked about this before, but this is just how our trail crew spent their time this year. We have a seven-person trail crew and most of their work is maintenance. As I said, we just have a big network and it takes a lot of work to maintain it. We did build a little, a few sections and one new trail this year as well. And that's, that's a departure. The previous couple of years, we hadn't built many new trails, but we built Ellie's Features, which was a connection from the Flume Trails to the top of what I call Gold, well, it's to Chantilly. It connects essentially Gold Run Pass to the Flume Trails at the top of Mike's Trail. And so, that was a new trail construction and we hired some, contracted some of that out. We did some of that our own and we had a bunch of volunteer work completing that. So, that was a cool project. We also rerouted a section of Toad Alley in Cucumber Gulch and that moved the trail out of the wetlands to decrease impact on wetland hydrology and wildlife. So, that was a valuable project as well, reroute. And then you probably didn't see it, but the Nightmare on Baldy and Mountain Pride, we did small reroutes and it was right in the fall before it snowed. So, and now that stuff's still covered in snow. So, you may, for the first time, see it in a month or so, whenever, a few weeks, when it all dries up. And then we, I'll get into this more later too, but we have a volunteer program that's robust. And so, that takes some prep work and data collection, our trail crews helping with that program. Some of the specific projects, I talked about Ellie's Features and that is, oh, God. Better way to do this, I'm sorry. Okay, that is a double meaning. The name of the trail, Ellie's Features, it was, it was created by Nikki LaRochelle, who's the BOSAC Chair. But it's in honor of Jeffrey Bergeron and his wife Ellen Hollinshead, who helped start the program and that's the trail connection that, that I just described, or the new trail that connects a couple of trails that I described. We do a lot of winter grooming. If you're not familiar, we do it by snowmobile with a little trailer attached. You can see in the bottom right photo. And that's a whole, about a 10-mile network of trails above the Gold Run Nordic Center. And that's pretty popular. We have a study that shows this, but it, I had the misconception that it was mostly just used by fat bikers, but in fact, a lot of cross-country skiers and hikers appreciate that too. So, it's a nice.
Love it.
Cool. Thank you. Yeah, it's a nice amenity the town's able to offer for free winter use. And I talked about the Toad Alley reroute and then for whatever reason, this summer, we wound up building a bunch of bridges and boardwalks. Just happened to be a focus of the, of the field season. Access and inclusion. So, that's another one of our strategic goals. And this picture is amazing and it's hard to see. I don't know if you saw it in your packet. Tony Overlock, our operation supervisor, just happened to be in the area and snapped this picture and didn't realize everything he'd caught. But if you look in the distance in the background, you have a woman walking at least one young, with at least one young child. You have what seems to be a gentleman in a wheelchair, mechanized wheelchair with a woman next to him. A guy with a crotch with a woman with a dog. And they're all using this trail. This is the Troll Stegan Trail and I'll get to it, but we did a bunch of.
You staged that photo, we know.
Yeah, I know. You think so? I don't think we could have staged it as well. Anyway, that was one of the, we've worked hard on, and focused on this access and inclusion piece. And a big part of that are what we're calling all persons trails. But trails that, they're not necessarily ADA compliant. That's a really hard standard to, to achieve. But they're close and they're also known as wheelchair friendly. So, one of them is the Troll Stegan Trail, which is the trail by the ice rink that leads you to the troll and that's a loop trail. But we retrofitted some of the boardwalks and we placed some of the stone with crusher fine. So, it's a more consistent surface for a wheelchair. And we did things like handrails and a, and a smooth concrete apron to get from the parking lot to the trail. And the picnic table is ADA compliant in that one of the ends is just further out. So, you can slide a wheelchair underneath it without hitting the framing of the chair. So, that's been a popular one. But we've also did one at the BOEC that maybe you hadn't been aware of and that will connect you at the Griffith Lodge, the BOEC. You can now get to the Salmo Reservoir on an all persons trail. So, that's a nice access point for people that might not have been able to access that before. Also, in the Cucumber Gulch at the Nordic Center, we have a new one that goes out to the, we call it the Avian Interpretive Site, but it's a nice viewpoint into the gulch. And the Riling Dredge Trail, we had done work on that last, in the 2023 field season, but we finished it this year with the parking on the, what would be the south side of French Gulch Road and some bump outs on the bridge so that wheelchairs and bike traffic can pass each other on a two-way bridge. Another thing under access and inclusion is we are overhauling our signage work plan. That came as an action item from our master plan. And the point there is to achieve a bunch of goals. One is to make our trail system more user-friendly. So, for one, that's like for underserved communities and have bilingual messaging. Improve wayfinding. So, people that don't know where to go, get to the right spot and have the proper experience. Another is to reduce sign clutter. You know, we just have stuff that might have made sense at the time, but you do that over periods of years and you just wind up with six signs and in 30 feet of trail and you just sort of ignore everything. So, trying to streamline all of that and that's been a fun process. We hired a consultant with that and we're now at the phase where they're giving us deliverables to, to try this out in, in a pilot study area, which will be Illinois Creek. So, that's by the ice rink and that troll trail and we'll, we're on schedule to install a bunch of that stuff in August, see how it looks and feels and, you know, how, how it works in terms of maintenance and installation and durability and then take what we learned there and apply it to the network on a larger scale.
When do you think that's going to be fully built out?
Oh, God, that's a loaded question. Well, I think we'll have Illinois Creek done in the fall. And then so, we'll target trying to do it over the 2026 field season. Could be that we're not all the way done until the summer of 2027, but the bulk of it will get installed. Our intention is not this summer, but next summer.
Is there any thought about putting like QR codes on it that you could scan about historical things on the trail that people might be able to look up?
Yep, absolutely. So, we want to take advantage of QR codes in a lot of spots. So, that, that's part of the plan. And I guess, you know, since you asked, this is kind of a prototype that we've changed from. We're not going to have the emergency locator. We're going to have more leave no trace messaging. We're going to have QR codes. We're going to have an elevation profile. But yeah, QR codes seem like a great, you know, the counterargument is, well, not everybody has cell phone service and that service isn't that good everywhere, but it's pretty good in most of our network. Yeah. Uh huh. And most people have it and it seems like we shouldn't not do it because not everybody can benefit. So, many can benefit that we want. Yeah. Uh huh. And most people have it and it seems like we shouldn't not do it because not everybody can benefit. So many can benefit that we want to institute that. And that can be bilingual too, you know, you can connect with a QR code and, and translate into the language that you prefer.
Right, love it.
Yep. Um, you know, one, just on this, Carol Sade, one of our council members really crystallized it well for me. She, we were, I was discussing it with them, presenting them kind of a progress report. And she said, she had realized this really isn't for the locals. This is for the visitors, really. And if the visitors are using our network better and have a better experience, then we'll all benefit. And that's really a good way to look at it. Like those of us that use our trails all the time, don't look at the signs that much. We know the rules and we know the trails. We know where we're going. But if we can get people that are visiting to, you know, use good etiquette and know where they're going. And, um, I, I just think it's a trickle down or up effect, everyone will look at it. But I think that that's sort of a good target. People that aren't using our trails now or not using comfortably or the way we want them to be, this can improve that. Uh, another piece of our program is, is education and we actually have two seasonal naturalists that, that do a lot of this work. So they lead guided hikes, um, mostly in cucumber gulch. They're kind of our ambassadors of the gulch. But also they, they go to Iowa Hill and Illinois Creek. And this summer we have plans for them to spread out even further. Um, this year for demographics, most of the participants in guided hikes were, um, out of state, two thirds of them. But often that's closer to 50 50. So I'm not sure if that's an anomaly or a new trend. Um.
Is that targeted to an adult level or kids or both?
Both. It certainly is family friendly. Um, usually it'll be on wild fire, wildflowers and wildlife and flora and fauna stuff. But, um, they, they can also, seasonally they'll, they'll focus on mushrooms. They can do birds. They, they've started to, um, do foraging hikes, you know, when there's stuff available. And, um, and last year, one of our naturalists happened to know a fair bit about natural medicines and, and did hikes based on that. They're focused on that. Um, but the point is that it is family friendly and adaptable. Um, and then when they're not leading hikes, we also have them working as ambassadors. They'll be, they'll, they'll have educational booths at trailheads. Uh, to answer questions and then, you know, reaching out at, like, we'll have a, a a booth tomorrow, Friday at town party every, in a few days, just as an example. So trying to broaden that outreach. Um, another piece of education is leave no trace. And if you're not familiar with that, that's kind of a new standardized messaging. Uh, and just being good trail etiquette. Some of the, there's seven principles. A couple of them are about camping and, and campfires and that applies less. But it's stuff that we all want everybody to practice, like leave what you find and pick up your trash and be prepared and be courteous, things like that. And, um, so we've worked hard to get everybody trained on that. And then, um, trained sort of like amplified it by training our rec center, uh, kids program counselors have this. And, um, we're going to have a couple of high school kids help us this summer at some of our booths to help with this. But just trying to more and more push this out, BTO, Rec Tourism Office is, is helping and putting some of the stuff on their website and helping spread this word to people that are coming in asking, you know, what to do in Breck and.
Duke, a question on that.
Yeah.
What is the strategy or philosophy about having or not having, uh, trash receptacles at the popular trailheads, particularly for dog waste?
It's a great question. I think that that philosophy is shifting. It is for me personally, I think. I, I think it's been, um, I would say the traditional philosophy has been high expectations of people to pack out their own stuff. And I think now it's like, we just need to accept that that's not working and put in trash receptacles in more places and more trailheads. And know that that will make an impact on especially dog waste. Yeah. I think it, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I'm characterizing this in my own lens, but yeah, no, I get it. And maybe it's been a stubborn resistance to that change, but I think we need to just accommodate that now at, at least a higher level.
I just feel that, yeah, more people would, if they knew they could throw out their dog waste right when they get, before they, they didn't have to put it in their car, I think more people would pick up their dog waste.
Absolutely. I agree with you. And so we have them in a few spots, you know, we have them at the B and B Trailhead and the Ice Rink, but we could certainly expand that.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, historically, the, I mean, I guess being involved in my share of those discussions over the years when I was in the open space. The philosophy is generally when you have, um, waste receptacles in areas that are kind of more remote.
Yeah.
You tend to get a lot of like, people find that as a convenient dumping place where if it was in the area where there was more eyes consistently, you wouldn't have people taking all their waste out there or even get, you get a lot larger stuff. If you don't see a lot of couches or, um, household waste in trailhead parking lots dumped. But when you have one waste can, that kind of gives the entree for people to do that. So that's, that's the competing one. And, um, I mean, there's cultures where you have no public waste receptacles, Japan being a leading example. And they also have almost no, you know, littering in their urban areas because people have to be responsible with, with what they consume.
And of course it's expensive. Um, so that's a factor too, but.
I mean, and I, I think that, you know, from monitoring that, you know, just the snow is probably the, the biggest factor of people not picking up, picking up after a dog. Like if you can see your dog, uh, you know, going out, you know, 20 yards from where you are in the summer, you're more likely to do it than when you have to post hole out there to pick it up. So that disincent, this, the, the climate we have is a big disincentive for people to use best practices. That's probably the, you know, if you're the study in, in, understand why people don't pick up waste, that's probably the leading reason. It's, it's not that they aren't aware or don't have, um, bags or receptacles. It's just the physical conditions.
There's just all the people who, you know, bag it and leave it on the side of the trail and then, you know, they intend to pick it up. Yeah. Then I can pick it up and put it in the trash can for them. I don't, I prefer that than just leaving it. So.
All right. Thanks for the dive.
I mean, it's, I think, you know, again, th- this is a consistent topic and we're always open to exploring, uh, new ideas. But it's, if you're the, probably create a, a list of items for discussion, whether it be open space, HOAs, anything like that. Pet waste is usually in the top three, along with parking being another leading topic that for discussion.
Uh, we launched a new website last year and I'm just going to quickly click to it because I think it's a great tool. Um. So it's brekost.com. So you just have to remember it. You can get there from the town of Breck and his website, but OST is for open, short for open space and trails. Oh my God. Um, so some of the nice features, you know, it, it, down here, it'll have a blog of, of current issues. For example, there's a Spruce Creek road closure when it's bear season and here's how to handle muddy trails. And here's where you can take your e-bike and here's our e-bike policy. Um, so, and then we also have, um, events. So you can sign up for guided hikes or a volunteer trail building event. Uh, we, we have a library of guiding documents, master plans. But this one is new and especially exciting. And, um, so here we have, we're trying to keep this as current as we can. We did update it today. We updated most days. Um, here are conditions of all the trails as they dry out. And this is kind of a, a select list of trails. It's not all of them. And it's not all sections of them. For example, the Borough Trail, not all of it is poor, but just painting with a broad brush, we need to put that there. So, so here's a good resource for trail conditions, but then, um, we've created a map. This is really cool. So I'm excited for you to see it. Thank you. God.
How did you do the map? You just clicked on the thing next to it?
Uh, let me go back.
All right.
No, this is good. This is, and we don't, we're not hip enough to have an app. So you do need to do, oh, here, here's how I did the map. So it, it highlights when you move the cursor over it on my map with conditions. But here it's color coded, um, which is pretty neat. This is, um, this is all persons, but if we did. Okay, okay.
I see you can put comments, report trail.
Yeah. So you can see based on the trail color, the red stuff is poor and the yellow stuff is, is fair. Everything else is good, which should have green. Something's funky with it, but I swear it works. Anyway, you can see here, this, this part of the trail is still wet and this is fair. And then if you, if you're out there and you come across some, thank you, you can report, it, it'll find your location and you can, you know, use your phone to show your location. You can report a downed tree or this trail is dry or this trail, you know, and this way we're getting a lot of crowdsourcing of reports with accurate locations. It's not somebody describing where it was, which can be hard to interpret. And finding out, yep, this trail's in good condition and this one's not quite ready. Oh, trees blew down. We'll go jump on those. So it's been a great tool. I don't think we had an equivalent tool like this. So we're trying to build it and make it sort of, um, gain traction in the community to, to point people there. And like I said, crowdsource it. So more and more people are, are feeding the information.
Is the intent on developing an app?
Maybe. Uh, do you think it should be?
I think I, I do. I think if you could report it in real time instead of taking a picture and then going home and.
No, you, you can report that in real time on your phone through the website.
Oh, just like through a browser.
But this is a survey one, two, three. So you, you know, this will get your location, except it's not turned on on our, but anyway, you, you have downed tree. You can write whatever you want. You can take a photo or not. You can put an email if you want to follow up and you submit it. You can do all this on your phone.
Yep. Okay. Yeah.
But that's not to say, I mean, it's a little harder than it would be to go through an app. So maybe if it works, we do that. I, I don't know what that entails. So I don't want to butt off more than we can chew, but it sounds cool.
We've looked at various times through the years about app and there's a balance because there is kind of an app fatigue. You know, like if you're, every time you have to park somewhere, you need a unique parking app. It, it discourages people versus being able to do some other kind of, um, method to get to the same result. So balancing the relative cost and with the amount of trail apps that are out there, um, this does have pretty good functionality. And I think from our experience, when there is like an issue, like I think there was a, a tree down at the junction right by Slalom and
Yeah.
in Upper Flume, people are pretty motivated to let us know that, that happens. I bet we had the report within, you know, a couple of hours of someone, you know, riding down that. There, there's incentive for them to like, not, to, to let it slide or whatever, when there's something like that, everyone reported. So I think we have pretty good success and people reporting to us.
Yeah, we even had to put a, um, I think it's geofence layer, but basically a, a boundary, um, on the trails that we manage. So that if you're on a trail at the Frisco Peninsula and see a tree down and you go to, because we'll say that it's dry on our website and you go to report a trail condition, you'll get a message saying like, thank you, but town of Breck can't help you with that, you know, um, just because, uh, we're getting so much, I guess, participation, which is good. Uh, but at the same time, we don't want to create false expectations and make people think that we'll be fixing something on the Frisco Peninsula.
Yeah, I would encourage you to, to kind of play around with it. It is pretty slick. Brad LaRochelle, who's our GIS person, he kind of put together and teamed with us. So it's always cool when, when we can have collaborations like that. And I mean, I, I think compared to what we've had in the past where we used to do, um, kind of essentially drawing on layers to GIS maps and uploading them. And it was very labor intensive. And, and this is a, um, you know, this time of year, people, there's demand for trails. And we, and we, it's really important to get that information out so people can do the right thing. And, uh, you know, compared to what we had before, I think we're, we're pretty happy with the evolution right now, but we'd, we'd encourage you to try it out and provide feedback.
I want to, I want to ask some questions just about trail apps. Um, because I tried to look up some of them on like All Trails and MTV Project, that, that app. And it seems like Colorado Trucks has most of our trails on it, but some of these other apps don't, which, which ones are the most popularly used by people who come here?
You know, I don't know about All Trails. Um, I can't speak to that one, but CoTrax and Mountain Bike Project and Trail Forks, we're in frequent communication with to provide updates. So I'd be curious like what isn't on those ones. I, I can't speak to All Trails like I said.
I was just looking for the Chantilly Trail on it earlier today and couldn't find it.
And it wasn't on All Trails?
Wasn't on All Trails or the Mountain Bike MTV Project.
Should be on MTV Project.
I could have spelled it wrong too.
Okay. Anyway, uh, no, it's good. And it is hard, you know, to Chris's point is like, there are all these apps. It can be hard to keep up with, you know, you, um, for example, one thing that we instituted recently is changing Slalom to a downhill recommended trail. So we worked with, that's now on CoTrax and Mountain Bike Project and Trail Forks. They used to have recommended routes that would take you up Slalom. And instead we've gotten those removed and rerouted and, you know, we put a bunch of signage out and in the field. But we also try to work with the apps that sort of change that user pattern. But it's hard to catch all the apps, like maybe All Trails is pushing people that way and we got to make sure and talk to them. Um, so work in progress, but we're catching some of them and, and BTO is a big help too. I think they're, they have their Be Like Breck app and they're able to help point people in the direction we'd like. But, um, yeah, to answer your question, trying to catch the main ones and those are the big ones that we know people are using the most, but that's not comprehensive.
That they don't have, um, ways to get comments like forwarded to you about your trails or anything like that? Like if people say a tree's down on one of them.
No, we don't have a system for that. Maybe we could find a way to
Like that?
Get the, that's a good idea though. We could have those apps point people to our website and then we get the comments filtered through there.
I don't know if they could keyword search it or use AI to kind of.
Uh huh. No, thanks. We're, we're, we're building this. Need, need ideas.
Many apps out there now.
Okay, friends of Breck and Rich Trails, Breck and Rich Trails or FOB T is, is what we call our volunteer program. And, um, this year, this past year, we had eight events. 136 volunteers. So they built some new trails, did some maintenance work, pulled a bunch. It's not just trail work. It's also weed pulling. Um, and then we, we happened to build a bu- bunch of buck and reel fencing this year, kind of like boardwalks. We needed a bunch of this trail infrastructure built. So volunteers help with that. And it, if you haven't participated, it's a great program. It's, um, you get like a hat and a t-shirt and a burrito, but you also like wind up taking, um, you connect with the section that you work on and take pride in, in our network and, or, you know, the weed pilling and the section you did. And I just think it's, um, it's a neat way to educate and invest our community into what we're doing, you know, I, it's corny, but I've dragged my little kids to these things and they remember the sections of trails that they helped build, even though they didn't make a lot. None of these volunteer days actually are that efficient in terms of work accomplished, but, but what they are is they're really building this community investment and support. And it's a, it's a cool program.
Where are they on your website?
Under events. And it might be FOB T for shorts. And we have one on Saturday. It's National Trails Day. Um, you can sign up on our website or at the town party and we'll be working, uh, based out of Carter Park and the trails nearby. Um, so stewardship is our fourth strategic goal and we, we throw that kind of a buzzword. We're using a lot because our program really has, you know, we've sort of built out the, the majority of our network in terms of land acquisition and trail construction. And now how do we manage all this stuff? We need to be good stewards of this big program that we've developed. Um, so cucumber gulch is kind of our, I don't know, it, it's the primary focus in terms of conservation. And, um, it's a 139 acres, over 50 of which are wetlands. And, uh, we work really hard to preserve and monitor this. It's one of the only places, at least in the town of Breck, that we have a seasonal wildlife closure is in cucumber gulch to, to protect it. Um, we do a lot of monitoring. We do beaver surveying. We, we monitor the size of the wetlands and the groundwater flow. We monitor the birds. We're looking for toads, but we're not seeing them, but we are, you could call it monitoring, but they haven't been there in a while. Um, and then we have wildlife cameras and trail data. So we try to stay on top of this and make management decisions based on the, the monitoring observations. We hire, um, a few consultants that are experts in these fields to help guide our management. Um, and then another piece of stewardship are what we do in terms of forest health and, and the weeds and river restoration, you know? I think we're all familiar now with kind of building, they call them fuel breaks or just sort of wildfire buffers or preventions. And so we'll clear cut swatch the land, cut them down into piles. Once the piles dry out, burn up the piles. And then that's, um, an area where the wildfire would not be able to continue to spread and it could be a line of defense for protecting our community from wildfires. Um, we also do things like thinning of forests where maybe we're not clear cutting it, but we're just building a healthier forest. Um, Cliff is a big help with that program actually. Um, and then I talked about how we have. And then I talked about how we have weed pulls. It's not just volunteer events. We work with the county. We, we do a lot of weed control beyond just what our volunteers assist with. And we have a big monitoring program that I'll get into and river restoration, just a couple of the big projects are in the Swan up Tiger Road. We, there's, we're working with the county to restore a section of that. We've got Reach A and Reach B, but you may be familiar with it up Tiger Road, just below Rock Island. And then the stretch of the Blue River, just north of the recycling center and a parcel we call the McCain property. We've put a lot of work into. We're working with Breck History. And we'll continue to do that this past year. What the big projects were installed, the Keystone Drill, and then we recently purchased the Dry Gulch property. So they did a full inventory of all those properties. Essentially identifying what's authentic history, what's kind of fake history and helping guide what we want to, how we want to manage that in the future. And then a big piece is visitor use management and data collection. You know, we, as we, we've gotten busier, we all feel this and we want to try to be making decisions based on data as much as we can, not just anecdotes or squeaky wheels or, you know, we want to be able to point and say, okay, well, we know this from, from data we've collected. So just going to hit on a few of the few of the counts that we did. So, so these, this is Sally Barber and B and B Trailhead over the past 10 years and just a couple level setting pieces here. These are with trail counters, which is just an infrared beam that goes across the trail. So a couple of things to know with that. One is it's going to double count you if you did a loop and, and, or an out and back and you cross that thing twice, you will show up as two. Or in the case of B and B or Sally Barber, maybe you did a loop, but you parked it, you know, you passed the trail counter twice as you got to your car. If you have a dog that runs in front of that thing, it may count as twenty-seven counts, you know. So it has its flaws, but it's valuable data. It's pretty easy. These are affordable and easy to maintain and set up. They do go down once in a while, which contributes to data gaps, but I think what's important here is not the totals, you know, the average daily count. Say if we're going to look at Sally Barber, you have ninety-seven in the winter and a hundred and twenty-five in the summer. Well, bake in that that might be skewed by these double counts and things, but it is relative year to year. It's the same technology that we used in two thousand and nineteen. So you can look back and see the trends. So I think both of these kind of highlight that we had a spike during COVID, which we all experienced. And now it's, it's stabilized. I think in the cases, B and B one, this one has caught my attention anyway. You know, I don't know why it's, it's lower in two thousand and twenty-four than two thousand and twenty-three and I'm not sure why. One small contributing factor might be that at least a lot of local users are cutting from the Wellington Trail through Country Boy Mine onto the B and B trails and they would thereby skip the trail counter, but I'm not sure that it, it really explains this big drop. So we'll have to keep an eye on that, but that's the data we have from those two. We also did a, a user study in the winter of two thousand and twenty-four, and that's a wildlife camera actually taking pictures of people going by and wildlife and then just tallying up what kind of users they were. So this was mostly in the groomed trails above Gold Run that I talked about earlier, but also at the B and B and Sally Barber. So it's not just those groomed trails. And I think it's a couple of things. One, it points out that people using those groomed trails aren't all fat bikers, which I talked about, and that was kind of a misunderstanding I had, but also just reminding us even in the winter that so many of our users are hikers, you know, I know for myself, I'm mostly a mountain biker and a skier. It's easy to lose sight of the fact that like almost everybody that comes to visit is hiking. So we need to keep that in mind as we, as we program. We will be doing a similar study in the summer. Yes.
Just something to think about. I know you've already done a lot of putting in place a path for the new signage. When I was skiing up at Grand Teton, so they groomed the park road there. And they actually have a sign at the beginning and it says, you know, walkers here, fat bikers here, classic skiers here, skate skiers here. Just a thought to think about in some of the popular trails. So
Rec Path, we do groom the Rec Path in conjunction with Town of Frisco.
Yeah. But just explaining to people that are hiking, not to hike and, you know, try and preserve those of us who break trail. Not to walk where we break the trail or, or, you know, just some, or where it is groomed to have walkers not walking in the the tracks. It's just a thought.
Yep. Thank you. So here's trail counters and cucumber gulch. Same thing. These are the same technology, those infrared beams. One big piece here is I, I would ignore the, the user drop that, that's indicated by this top line with the overall count because one, we did the tow alley reroute and that made one of the trail counters, you know, ineffective. Yeah, ineffective during the time that we were rerouting that trail. That section was closed and also one of our key trail counters was down for like four weeks or something in a busy season. So I think we can, at least anecdotally, according to our naturalists who are in there most days, it was similar visitor levels, visitor use levels to, to these past few years. And I think this, this tow alley being lower is a reflection of those two issues and not lower use. Troll Steegan, this is incredibly popular. An important piece here is sometime mid-winter. It's, it's subjective, but we make it, it's a loop trail and we turn it into an out and back in the winter. Once the trail, once the snow kind of crowns on the boardwalk and we're not able to maintain it and it becomes unsafe for people. It's just too slippery and I don't know, uncomfortable for people to hike. So we'd make it an out and back. So when that happens, that skews the, the trail counts higher in the winter. So just, you know, when you're looking at these totals, there's not, I wouldn't say there's close to equal use in the summer versus the winter, but there's still significant use in the winter and this is by far busiest trail. Think anybody that's been there, you saw the staged picture. It wasn't that hard to get because there's so many people there. Okay. And then a big project we have that you may have heard about is, is working with the Forest Service and Town of Blue River and Summit County. And collectively, we were able to receive a grant to have some consultants come in and help come up with recommendations for the trailheads. Quandary, Blue Lake, Spruce Creek and McCullough Trail. And truthfully, those trails, and we have data to support this, were being overused, you know, that the demand was a kind of, they were exceeding capacity and then they, the, those areas have also been now designated as part of the, a national monument connected to Camp Hale. And so now they have even more attention. And so we're trying to solve what's a known problem in terms of building up, hardening these sections of trails that are most popular, building up the amenities with bathrooms and trash cans and bigger or paved parking lots, reservation system, shuttle system, just to accommodate the level of use because they were already getting used at high levels when they weren't built for it. So it seems like people are coming, whether they have bathrooms and hardened trails or not. So we want to make sure that we're protecting the resource and, and people's experience. So that, the stage of that project is we, this was just to discuss with the county commissioners and the county and the Forest Service are going to partner and sponsoring a NEPA analysis, which is a Forest Service study to determine the the feasibility of, of all these recommended improvements. And they'll look at it with public comment and do a bunch of environmental studies and figure out what, you know, what makes sense and what doesn't. Okay. And this is our team. So, so Bosak is our advisory commission and that's Nikki and David and Chris, Bobby, Chris and Matt, and then Jay Beckerman, who's on town council, joins us for Bosak, serving as liaison. And we have some dogs that help us every day. There's the Mabel, Alan's neighbor. And then, and then we have four full-time staff. So that's myself and Alex Stack and Tony Overlock and Joel Dukes. Alex is our coordinator and Joel is our operations lead. He runs the trail crew. And then this is, again, this is our two thousand and twenty-four staff, but I'm happy to say that all but three of them have returned this year and, and one of the people that returned had worked for the trail crew previously. So we've had good retention. We've got a summer crew this summer that we're excited about. And I appreciate the input tonight and keep it coming, please. Check out the website, but also just like we want to hear from, from you guys, how we're doing, what we could do better, what you're seeing. And this is how to get ahold of us.
Great. Thanks Duke.
Duke, I have a concern.
Yes.
By the golf course and Tiger Road. And there's just no like pedestrian access down to down Tiger Road, really, especially in the summer with the golf course closed. Is there any plans for?
So we just looked into that and to build a like pedestrian lane on the side is a million and a half dollars to get to Gold Run Road. But it is something we would like to do. It's just expensive, but that is something we're looking at more closely as we figure out what we want to do for that McCain parcel and all the surrounding housing neighborhoods. And how to connect them with our larger trail network and also just a known issue that you're describing. So it's expensive, but that's not to say we aren't interested in doing it.
The county, the county owns Tiger Road or we own?
Well, I think we own the, yeah, then we own the right away on the side. We have some open space property on the side. I know. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Million next year, right?
Last year. This year, we, yeah, we're not going to spend.
Last year was a little bit of anomaly in terms of that money. I mean, we generate about three, three and a half million, is it, in sales tax every year, which is a main source of revenue for the program. So I'd say on average, our budget's more down in that four to six million range, but yeah.
Don't forget us out there. We want to get to town safely too.
Noted. And there are a lot of people that want to get up to where you live safely. Yep. No, I think there's demand for that.
Yeah, there are a lot of drunk golfers.
I, I just wanted to acknowledge Duke and his staff. I mean, they do an amazing job. You can see all this stuff and there's many other things besides what he just presented to you that they have to deal with on a daily basis. And it's, it's a staff of just four full-time people. And then we've got our seasonals, another nine that come on in the summer, but the amount of work they get done is amazing and they work hard. Of course, they've got some of the best jobs in the town and, but but they really work hard and do a great job.
Thanks Mark.
Thank you.
Good job Duke. All righty then. Mark, want to give us an update?
Sure. It was last week, council actually had a retreat prior to the council meeting for about four hours. So it was a real marathon of a council day. I think it went for almost eight hours total. Let's see, first of all, maybe just in terms of actions that they took. Yeah, they, they, they approved the the shed on Maine, North Maine. So they accepted that. So no issues there. So that went forward. Chris had his second reading on the extended investing up at Cucumber Creek Estates, which he described for you.
That was all good. Thanks again, Duke. And then the main thing, let's see, the, the main thing was the retreat itself, the council came up with a number of goals.
There we go.
It was goal setting is what they were trying to do and priorities for the upcoming one to three years. And the council actually went through a blogging exercise on a series of potential priorities that were listed and then the council decided.
Is your mic on? Because I'm having a hard.
Keeps going out on.
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Let me use Chris's because this one, maybe the batteries are something. Anyway. Yeah. So a series of priorities in terms of a potential list and the council decided what they wanted to focus on is the highest priorities. And so what those ended up being is one is they're, they're calling it executing housing. It's really continuing to focus on housing program. Continuing to look at, you know, extending the five-year housing blueprint that has been in place that's set the stage for most of the housing that we've developed over the last several years. Collecting data to make sure that we're still reaching the right targets in terms of, you know, people that need housing. Of course, there's a need across the board. And then looking at a number of other things related to housing as well. So that was their first goal. The second was community outreach. They want to continue to focus on that and getting the word out to the public about projects. And I think part of that messaging is really reaching out to, you know, the Spanish speaking audience, which obviously there's a lot of folks in our community. That's them and how we can engage them more.
Mark, what's our population as a percentage of Spanish speaking people?
I, I'm, you know, that's a good question. I'm thinking it's around.
My observation, this is an awful white community.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's in the, well, in the schools. And that's obviously not who's living in the residence, but I think in the schools, it's around thirty percent. But I don't know what it is for the town as a whole. It's less than that, I'm guessing.
Schools.
Isn't it high school fifty? You know, it used to be thirty when my kids were there.
From all of the school district.
Oh, oh, yeah, but the high school was, maybe it's the, the non-white population was diminishing.
Chris thinks it's twenty to thirty percent within the town limits. So Spanish speaking, yeah. So anyway, that's a, that's a key goal they want to work on. We've created this communications division here at the town about a year ago, and that's their goal is to kind of be a source to provide information to the public and get the word out on any number of things that are going on. So anyway, that's a continued effort. Code enforcement was another one that came up. And that's obviously partly what we do, partly what people like Ellie and, and Cliff do in terms of looking at sign code and stuff like that. So that's something they want us to focus on, but there's a number of other layers to that. There's code enforcement related to short-term rental accommodations, all kinds of other pieces. Sustainability in terms of the plastic initiatives and, you know, no plastic water bottles, stuff like that. So there's a number of places where that comes into play. Keely Ambrose, our attorney is working to consolidate all our code enforcement provisions into one area in the code and really streamline everything. So she's got a number of things she's working on. I was just in a meeting on that earlier today, which I'll update you on Cliff tomorrow. So, but anyway, yeah, it's, it's something the council wants to see us to continue to, to work on. The Riverwalk pathways and the whole improvements to the Riverwalk. You've seen some of those like test improvements that have gone on over the last several years back here with the, that nice new piece of the Riverwalk, the Rec Path, just on the other side of the river over here. There's, there's a long-term plan. They'd like to see that implemented over a number of years. But understanding that there's financial implications and so, you know, kind of dole it out over time. And the other, the other priorities were childcare. Looking at the needs of the local centers. But I think there's really a focus from the council on, rather than building an entire new center, looking at opportunities to expand classrooms on the existing centers, like for example, Little Red, there's room in the back, Little Red to do an addition if they wanted. They did just do a small addition at Timberline next to the police station there. And so it's opportunities like that.
Mark, I got a question about that. In, in other communities, there are very good pre-care, preschool entities, which are in some case franchises where all the issues have been worked out. There's formulas for this. Would it not behoove the town to Would it not behoove the town to allocate a piece of land and approach one of these entities and say, hey, we will long-term lease this to you for a, a small amount of money. If you come in and put a daycare center there, we'll help you with the construction, whatever. It would seem to me that that would be financially a better long-term proposition for the town and a better solution for childcare. Have they ever considered that?
I, I'm not aware of any of these entities approaching the town or being here.
Well, my question, has the town approached them?
I, I don't know who they are. So, but yeah, I don't know if we've done that. I can't.
I think, I think one of the goals for the council is also to make childcare affordable. And most of those other entities, if you look at what is charged by on the private marketplace, at least of any of the people I know living across the country is significantly more than what the, the council wants to see families pay within our community. So I don't think there'd be much financial.
That's the case, Chris, because I've, I've had some experience and I've got a bunch of grandchildren. So I have some direct personal experience in that, so.
Well, obviously we're both using anecdotal information, but of all the people I know across the country, the, the quality and the cost of the childcare that I received because of the subsidy from subsidies from the town, it was considerably less than anyone else living in all the markets that I'm aware of.
Thanks. And then the last priority was the e-delivery system and kind of the long-term goals for that. You know, it's, it's been well-received. They're looking at expanding it right now, but there's a limit to how much they can expand it. And they obviously know there's other issues like that land isn't gonna stay vacant forever. You know, the people that bought that whole property, a Parkway Center are planning to come in and build in the next several years. And so it's planning for the long-term. You know, ideally it'd be nice to do a partnership with them and, you know, maybe.
Are there vendors that aren't participating? Because I walked.
Yes.
I walked out of, I walked up the street and saw a big tractor trailer sitting in front of Embers unloading food in the middle of the day.
Yeah. So the biggest one is Shamrock.
That's what it was.
Yeah. And Shamrock has been, just like they were in Vale, they were reluctant to join at first. They didn't, they wanted to see that it was successful, it was working before they would jump on board with it. Now they have expressed an interest. The council just about three or four months ago had a deliberate discussion about do we add Shamrock or do we add, like, I think it's like eighteen other smaller vendors that bring up their stuff. And they decided at that time, cause they couldn't do both. They don't have enough room at the existing facility to accommodate everything. And so they decided to go with the smaller vendors, which leave Shamrock kinda still in town, but it's one of the few ones now that's left. The rest of them are all being handled through, you know, the operation there at one oh six West. That's the name of the company that runs it. But anyway, it's looking forward on that and budget issues and stuff like that. So those are the highest priorities. There was a number of other issues that were brought up that were, you know, kind of a recognition that there are things that will be worked on in upcoming year and a half. One of them is an update to our comprehensive plan, which I think I've mentioned to you guys before and that's something you will be hearing more about in the upcoming months. So, yeah, that's my update.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Any other issues to bring up today? No, with that.
That's what, at the last meeting, I think Graham from BGV, I was, I take notes on my computer. I just want you all to know if I'm typing on my computers where I take notes or questions that I wanna ask later. I think he may have thought that I was, I just wanted to make sure you guys didn't think I was doing other stuff or not paying attention. I just.
Thanks for that, Paul. Okay, with that, we'll adjourn the planning commission meeting for June third, twenty twenty-five.